Before we get to the agenda, I wanted just to take a moment to congratulate the commissioners sitting on each side of me. They will be running unopposed in the November election, if you didn't hear that. And I take that to mean that people are quite happy with what they've done for the last four years. I know I was excited when they won four years ago, and it's been a pleasure serving with both of them the last two years. So, they are tremendously dedicated, and they've shown that ever since they started. And the interesting thing is, I think both of them would like to have had competition. You know, they really want, but what they've guaranteed is they'll still be knocking on your door, they just won't be asking you to put a sign in your front lawn. So, well, I don't promise that, too. They may be buying signs right as we speak right now.
Maybe a few of today's signs.
But it's gonna make it such a nice fall. It would be nice in fall.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for saying that, but I would also, if there's any residents who are interested, October 23rd is the deadline for writing candidates, so.
They're still desperate for competition.
Okay, I have to start now.
Sorry, I take it back.
No, I really appreciate your sentiments, Mayor, and, you know, your encouragement means a lot to me personally. It's a great honor. It's one of the biggest honors of my life to represent this community, and I want to ensure the residents that every day and every meeting, I commit myself to the residents of this community, and, you know, I'm doing the best I can, and I can definitely speak for my family and the people that I know that appreciate the job that Commissioner Perry has done over the last four years and beyond, because I really think that she's been a great benefit to this community and to my family and the families throughout Pleasant Ridge.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it has been an amazing four years. It's incredible that it's already been four years, and I have learned more than I had any idea I would ever stretch and learn and grow, and it's so exciting to be a part of so many really interesting, you know, initiatives and working with such a great group of people. And Commissioner Krzyjak has always been a great cohort to just bounce all of these new ideas and new just avenues off of. So, thank you all. It's gonna be a fun fall.
And I don't have to get used to anybody else, so. First item on the agenda is public discussion items not on the agenda. Anybody have anything to bring forward?
Hi, I'm Karen Mahia. I live at 31 Sylvan. I also am the Communications Manager for the Woodward Avenue Action Association, WA3, and we spoke about this at every commission meeting, but we will continue to do so. We will be holding a two-day event in September. I'll speak about day one briefly. It's a vision luncheon. It will be Friday, September 11th, from 11:30 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Tickets are $50 a person, and includes a great lunch from Rub Detroit. Speakers that we will be having participate in a panel discussion will be from different areas along the corridor. So, we have art. We have Robert Elms, who's with Galapagos Art Space. He will be doing a large redevelopment in Highland Park. So, he's actually bringing his art space from Brooklyn to Michigan, so it's really great. We will have Brad Olisansky, who is the CEO for the M1 Concourse, which is a development going on in Pontiac. We will also have Michael Ford, CEO of the Regional Transit Authority, RTA, which is very important, because they are looking to pass a big referendum next year on transit. And we will have Zach Pachek, who is the owner of Detroit Bikes, which, these are bikes that are manufactured right here in Detroit. So, I think it'll be great. We have a soft yes from Alex Trahano from WDT to be the moderator for the event, so I think it's really going to be a dynamic discussion, and it's not going to be just some stuffy panel that you see, you know, Mackinac, not to say anything about a Mackinac Conference, but it's just going to be a very in-depth discussion about what's going on in the region and how it affects those of us that live along the Woodward corridor. And then Saturday's event is an event you can bring your family. It is called Bike Woodward or hashtag Bike Woodward. This will be Saturday, September 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We will start in Highland Park and ride our bikes through Woodward to Pleasant Ridge, and then back to Highland Park for a little food truck rally. So, we have some really great options that day. You get a really cool t-shirt designed by Team Detroit, one of the best ad agencies there is around. And then afterwards, we'll be having an after-party in downtown Ferndale. So, more details to come. If you have any questions, feel free to find me on Facebook, I'm on the PR page, or go to woodwardavenue.org and sign up for the event, and thank you so much.
So, Highland Park is the new Brooklyn?
Um, yeah.
It's not Detroit, huh?
No, we'll see about that.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, excuse my voice. Gail Gorden here tonight to represent the Pleasant Ridge Environmental Committee. I'd like to remind everybody that on Saturday, September 26th, our committee is hosting an electronics recycling and shredding event. The event will be held over at the Gainesboro DPW Yard from 1:00 until 5:00. The event was posted in this last edition of PR Connect. This is a great little piece of information, by the way, whoever did this. We will be accepting electronics, TV monitors, computer equipment, printers, CD and DVD players, remotes, cell phones, cameras, et cetera, metal items. There are no items too big, though I think, you know, somebody said a trailer one time, maybe not a trailer, but no propane tanks, please. Gently-used books will be accepted. We will be donating the books to the Huntington Woods Library and to the Pleasant Ridge Lending Library. The paper for the shredding that day, if you could limit your paper shredding to no more than three grocery bags full. I have more than that, I think, so I'm gonna have to figure out what I want to shred that day. They would like you to not include paper clips in anything you have to shred or binder clips. Staples are okay, but no paper clips or binder clips. Ridge resale will be there as well that day, and they will be accepting donations of gently-used clothing and small household items. And we're also still looking for some volunteers for that event. No heavy lifting will be involved. We're gonna need some people to, thank you, Jay. We will need people to direct traffic. I know while Silkworm is sending someone to man the shredder, they want someone also with talking to people about their paper that they're gonna put through the shredder and how to kind of put it through. So, somebody will have to be at the shredder for part of the day. While it is a four-hour event, you don't have to be there for the four full hours. You can come for one or two hours. That will be fine. We're also excited to announce an upcoming Pleasant Ridge Environmental Committee event on Monday, October 19th, starting at 7:00 over here at Four Ridge Road. We'll be hosting a presentation by Kay Sekunder. Kay is an arborist and plant health care manager for Owens Tree Service. She will be educating us on the care and management of our trees. I've heard Kay speak before. She's very knowledgeable, has a lot of information, so if you're having problems with your trees or have any questions about tree management, please bring your questions. That night, she'll be more than happy to answer them. So, unless anybody has any questions right now or any comments, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay. We'll move to the next item. Condemnation and demolition of the property commonly known as Seven Oakland Park Boulevard, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. Before the public hearing, I think we can have a little bit of discussion, please.
Sure. I just have a couple of words to say, and then I'm actually gonna turn it over to City Attorney Need to give an overview of condemnation and the process and what that means. The question before us tonight is a public hearing on the potential action to condemn Seven Oakland Park. The property has been and continues to be in a state of disrepair and blighted condition. This has been an ongoing process that the city has been engaged in actively since April of this year, and the property has not improved since then. As you know, it was posted, "Do Not Occupy" as a threat to human occupation in June, and the city's been conducting regular progress reports. Darren Humphries from the Building Department and Assistant State Manager Scott Petersak have been present and attended all of the inspections and answering the questions you have about those, but the information's in your background materials. With that, I think I turn it over to Greg Need to give you some more information on condemnation and what's being asked of you tonight, what it means, and what the process is going forward.
Sure, thanks. The, there are three different codes that really are impacted here. The first is the International Property Maintenance Code, and that's a national code that, as its name applies, sets forth standards for property maintenance, and it is part of the Michigan Building Code. The letter from the building official to the property owner in June that's in your packet itemized all the violations on the property, it gives some specific citations to parts of that International Property Management Code that were violated. Chapter 34 of our city code has a specific article dealing with nuisances. All the violations, including all those code violations, constitute a violation of that part of our city code. And in fact, again, the letter from the building official itemized the various violations of that part, the nuisance part of our code. We also have a separate section dealing with dangerous structures. It's not clear that that section of the code is applicable here. The garage on the property may or may not be a dangerous structure, but as that letter noted, the property really had to be cleaned up before the building official can do a proper inspection and verify that. You have a proposed motion in the packet. It gives the property owner 60 days to take the necessary corrective action. 60 days is the time period that's set forth in the dangerous structure as part of the ordinance. I think, given the history of the property and the circumstances, it's a reasonable period of time, because again, what we want to get is compliance. We don't necessarily want to take further steps. We would prefer that the property owner take the necessary steps to abate this situation on their own. During that 60-day period, there'll be periodic inspections, a requirement for weekly status reports. After 60 days, if the violations have not been rectified to the satisfaction of the building official, the next step would be to file an action in Circuit Court to enforce the order. We would ask the court to allow the city administration to take any necessary steps to address the nuisance conditions, cleaning the property, removing all the junk and debris, up to and including demolition, if in fact that was necessary or appropriate. All of those costs pursuant to our ordinance would be a lien against the property. So, although the city would have to obviously pay something to do that, we would recoup those costs through further action and with a lien on the property. This is a public hearing, at which point any member of the public, the property owner, the representatives, has the opportunity to address the commission and present whatever comments or evidence they would like to present. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, then the commission would take action, the administration, we prepare a motion, a recommended motion, if you decide to go forward, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mayor?
Just, Mayor, a quick question. Mr. Need, I wonder if you could clarify just the meaning of the word condemnation in this context. What does it actually mandate? What would actually happen immediately, and what would happen at the end of 60 days? Does a condemnation create some action that happens immediately, or is that really dependent on the resident perhaps not doing anything for that 60 days, and then that's when the condemnation takes effect and things begin?
Yeah, condemnation in a legal sense means a whole lot of different things. In this particular context, it means you have determined that the property is in a nuisance condition as of today. However, it doesn't mean that necessarily the city has to take immediate action. The property owner has their time period to comply. So, the word condemnation in this sense really means we reviewed the information, we've determined that there isn't a nuisance condition, and we have condemned the property. It doesn't necessarily mean that the property will be torn down or anything really done by the city until the end of the 60-day period.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, for that summary. As far as recouping any costs that the city may eventually have to take, I know you mentioned a lien on the property or other further action. What would be an example of the further action as far as to take to court or to, you know, some other legal means for reimbursing the city for actions towards bringing this property up to compliance?
Sure. You could have an action against the property owner to recoup the cost. You could place the amount on the tax rolls as an assessment that is specifically provided for by the ordinance language, and that obviously could result in foreclosure down the line as with any other unpaid tax application. Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing, and anyone who has comments, please come forward, give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm George Lenko, 32 Oakland Park, and I feel your pain. This is a very hard decision in front of the City Commission, both in terms of private property rights, in terms of our historic structures, and also in terms of humane treatment of our neighbors. It's happened before in this city. It'll happen again. We need to do it right. The whole thing about condemnation and demolition and dangerous structures, you know, is a little bit in the eye of the beholder. I kid you not, because, you know, we've had several houses on Oakland Park. I live on Oakland Park, you know. There are three houses that were walkaways. One is the home that was lovingly restored by Robert Daniels, I'm sorry, Don Daniels and Robert Campbell. The other one, Lorette and me. The other one by the laid laws, and in each instance, the home inspector said, "Don't touch it." But in the end, it was good for the house. We've had one tear-down on the block. You know, tear-downs are extreme. There are many recourse's long before that, and the recourse's would be, you know, maintain the house, find an orderly way to either stay in the house or leave the house. And the only thing that I would encourage in all of this is let's find a humane way to do this. I was encouraged by the city attorney when he was saying this is the start of the process, not the end of the process. I have not been inside the house in question. I would say that the block club, well, first of all, the owner of the house has been a longtime resident of the block, very long, long before I moved on the block, and then as well on top of that, you know, in recent times, the block club itself decided to fund the mowing of the lawn just to make it right as much as we could. Let's just do what we can to make it right. That's all I would offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Drew Carnwath, and my address is actually 8457 Andersonville Road, Clarkson, Michigan, 48067. I'm involved with this matter, and I appreciate the comments. I was recently appointed as the attorneys for the owner of the home in a separate matter. You know, it's somewhat of a privacy issue, so I don't care to go into the details of that, but we've since, you know, since my involvement, I realize this isn't immediate for this community, but since my involvement, we have been trying to communicate and work on a way to resolve the situation so that they can continue to live there. That's what they want. They want to be in their home, and they just want to, you know, enjoy the community like everyone else. We have attempted to contact one person, and that fell through. We have another meeting scheduled, and we're expecting to get at least some proposals in terms of what kind of costs we're looking at for cleanup. And separately, we're gonna explore, Oakland County has a loan process that may be applicable for them, may not, but we're gonna explore that, and I've also contacted some contractors. The status of the house is somewhat involved in the other case situation, so I think that, you know, even though I wasn't appointed for this particular situation, I think that it's appropriate to, you know, try and assist in this particular matter, because I think the two are related, interconnected. The homeowner unfortunately is in the hospital right now. She has had some health issues over the last year. Some of that may contribute to the situation with the home, but she wasn't able to be here tonight, and I wanted to come and at least advocate on her behalf. So, we appreciate the city. We understand that there's a process and a procedure that needs to be gone through. You know, like as the attorney, Mr. Need, had said, this is the beginning of the process. We're hoping to come up with a resolution as quickly as possible, so I just wanted to communicate that.
Thank you very much.
My name is Janet Reinhold. I live at 4035 Blood Road, Metamora, Michigan, and I am Mary Dean's cousin. My mother and Mary Dean are cousins, first cousins, I'm so once removed. I am aware of the situation, painfully aware of it. I also would like to see Mary Dean and Pat stay in the home, and I knew that there is a lot of work that has to be done. And as Drew alluded to, there is another issue going on, and so our goal is to try to keep them in the home, but obviously, we know that there has to be some major cleanup, and we want to work with the city of Pleasant Ridge as to get this resolved so that they can maintain the home. So, I'm here to advocate for Mary Dean and for Patrick, to try to keep them in the home. So, if you have some questions for me, I will gladly answer them.
Just great to know that there are people advocating.
Well, everybody on her generation is gone, so we've reached back. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm Scott Gorland, at number nine Oakland Park, and all I wish to say is I've lived next to this house and the situation for years and years, and I have two suggestions. One is that the house be sold while it still has some value so that the owner and her, the other person who lives with her can find an appropriate alternative place to live with appropriate assistance, because I don't feel having seen the Ferndale fire and rescue there on virtually a weekly basis that the home is really safe for them to remain in. The other issue is, I think if it is sold, it can be stripped, and as Mr. Lenko has suggested, some people could take the house and make something out of the house that would restore it to what this street and neighborhood are used to having. Or it should be torn down, and then the property sold. But I don't think that we can or should stand by and let there be a continuation of the situation that has been, you know, progressing for now several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Close the public hearing. The next item is condemnation and demolition of the property commonly known as Seven Oakland Park Boulevard, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that the structure on the property commonly known as Seven Oakland Park Boulevard, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan be condemned. That the property be declared a public nuisance. The structure and property is a public nuisance for the reasons as set forth in the letter of the city's building official dated June 2nd, 2015. The property owner has 60 days or until October 12th, 2015, to thoroughly clean, sanitize, and make necessary repairs to the property as directed by the building official, and shall submit to the building official weekly health and safety progress inspections of the interior and exterior of the property. If the property is not brought up to minimum code standards by October 12th, 2015, by correcting the violations described in the June 2nd, 2015 letter, and any additional code violations subsequently discovered, as determined by the building official, the City Commission directs the city administration to pursue any action necessary to abate the existing nuisance, up to and including demolition of the structure. Any costs incurred by the city related to such abatement shall be considered a lien against the property. The city shall deliver to the property owner a copy of this motion by first-class mail by posting a copy on the front door of the property.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Quick discussion.
Yeah.
So, one of the concerns I had was something that Mr. Lenko touched upon, and it's the human side of things, to make sure that we're operating in a compassionate manner, and that if there's some additional help that's needed by these residents, that we're taking that into consideration, hoping to possibly facilitate some of that. In questioning back and forth with the city manager over email about this among the group, we did receive satisfactory information, in my opinion, that, without revealing any personal information, that there have been things, efforts done, there has been attention given to this, so it's not as though we're looking at just throwing people out on the street with nowhere to go and no kind of assistance. The information I got back, to me, was satisfactory, to make sure that we were looking at the human side of things as well and being as compassionate as we could be with this. And part of the reason I asked Mr. Need to define or clarify the word condemnation is because my understanding of it this week was that when you condemn something, it's done, it's gone, and that's obviously not correct, but that was my understanding of it, just because I didn't know much about it. So, I hope that this was helpful, the information presented tonight, and I hope that it shows that we're taking this very seriously, and this isn't just something we're trying to kick somebody off of the street. That's certainly not what we want to do, and as Mr. Need said, we hope for compliance, because that would be the best thing for everybody and for the city. That's all I really had to say about it. Thank you.
And I feel better just hearing, just in the public hearing, that there are efforts being. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I had several residents reach out to me, like, and had basically the same sentiment as Mr. Gorland, and, you know, a lot of the nearby neighbors had, you know, where, you know, they very much respect their neighbors, and they respect everyone's privacy, but they also are concerned because of just health and safety for the community, as well as that they're concerned that obviously the residents of the home can't keep this up. And so, it's a big concern to them, and, you know, and for the past four years, this issue has come up periodically over and over. The steps that the city has laid out, I think, are just, are very thoughtful, and, you know, I trust that this is the best process that we could, that we could have on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger? Yes, motion carries. Okay, the next item is governmental reports. Representative Woodward, please.
Let's leave that there. I'm not very tall, so I'll stand on my tiptoes. Mayor Metzger, commissioners, good evening, everyone. Robert Wittenberg, state representative, just wanted to come first, say hello, but wanted to make you aware. come first, say hello. Uh, but wanted to make you aware. Uh, well, I'll do that second. First, we had some community conversations that we, we had throughout the district. We went, uh, again, there's seven different cities that comprise the 27th, uh, House District. So we had something in, in each community. Um, so it was a light turn, turnout here in Pleasant Ridge. Um, but I'm hoping that's a good thing, that people know they can reach out to me and they can contact me. Um, again, you know, I want to do it so people know I'm here in the community, that I'm always available to help. Um, and it was also a beautiful summer day. I actually went and took a look at the pool, uh, while I was there, because I was over here. Yeah. I didn't see you in your reserved seat though.
I know. You could have used one of my guest passes.
Yeah, maybe. Exactly. Yeah. They wouldn't let me in to go swimming. So, uh, there was a practice going on. So, uh, but we had, um, you know, it was, it was nice throughout the district, although it was a good turnout overall. Uh, but again, want to encourage people, if there are ever any issues, anything we can help with.
Excuse me, Jim?
Jim?
I'm sorry.
No worries. Uh, so, um, again, just want people to, to know that they can reach out to me if there are ever any questions or if they ever need anything, you know, for our state government and suggestions even. I'm always, always happy to hear. There's some of the, some bills that I'm working on that have come to me from constituents who, you know, something that I had no idea about, but it was something that I'm like, oh, that's something we should probably look at. Um, so again, my, my email's robertwhittenburg@house.mi.gov. Um, and then we actually have a toll-free number now. I guess we had it, but I always felt weird giving it out, but it's, uh, eight five five rep wit. So it's R E P W I T T.
I'd be embarrassed.
All right.
That'll fit on a plate.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. No, I don't, I'm not, yeah, I'm not seeking a vanity plate, that's for sure.
Very nice.
So, but again, people at home, if anyone wants to reach out to me, please do. Uh, and then what I wanted to come, uh, just let people know about, um, because since the last time I was here, there, there hasn't been a lot going on in Lansing. I think we started to talk about road funding and all that. And there, nothing has, has been moved since then. Um, uh, we, you know, there were, uh, I don't know if I, I don't remember which, because I go from meeting to meeting, I don't remember specifically. I know we, we spoke about it here, but, uh, recently the, the senate majority leader, uh, Republican said, you know, Republicans were elected here and the Republicans are going to figure this out. Well, they, they haven't yet. And so we're hoping that it'll be a bipartisan solution, that they'll actually be willing to work with the Democrats. I mean, I think if we're going to have a viable long-term solution, it's got to be a bipartisan solution. Um, so we're hoping that it's something that we can get addressed sooner than later. Uh, and I think I spoke about some of the, the alternatives and some of the options that, that I support and will push for. So I will keep you posted. We're in session again next week. And if there is by chance, uh, a, a solution voted on, I will let you know. And I'll be back here. Uh, but for tomorrow, wanted to, to let people know, we're holding a, a town hall, um, called Redrawing the Lines: A Fair Solution to Legislative Redistricting. So, uh, about redistricting and gerrymandering. So currently, for, for people that are unaware, um, the way it stands here in Michigan is that the legislature and, and politicians actually draw up the districts. So whoever, you know, whatever party's in power, uh, gets to draw up the districts to their liking. And so there's, you know, been some movements in a lot of other states to take it out of the hands of the elected officials. And that's something we want to do here. We don't want the, uh, elected officials to pick their voters and pick their districts. We want the voters to be able to pick their, their officials and their, you know, their representatives. So we want it to be, uh, an independent, nonpartisan organization. This is something that the League of Women Voters has been pushing for in some other states. Uh, they're actually now starting to talk about they're going to host their own town halls. Uh, unfortunately, there wasn't anything planned as of, as of recently. And so that's why I, we started planning this town hall, because I want to kind of light a fire under their butt, because I really want this to, to move. Uh, and if this is a partisan effort, I truly believe if this is, you know, Democrats or Republicans, if it's one side or the other pushing for it, that it probably won't move anywhere. Uh, I think sometimes people are just sick of partisan politics and they'll say, well, this is one side's push, um, you know, to, to gain on, on the other side. And so if this is a nonpartisan, uh, effort, which we're hoping that League of Women Voters will be involved with, uh, that we'll get it accomplished. And so we're holding this town hall again, um, just to create awareness. And we have two great speakers, uh, Mark Shower, former congressman. This is, uh, this is one of the issues that he's been working on. Um, and Mark Brewer, who is, uh, he's been involved in politics for a long time. And he's an election law, uh, he does, you know, is an attorney doing election law, uh, over Goodman Acker. So great speakers that will be there, uh, tomorrow. So the, so the actual, uh, town hall is tomorrow, which is August 12th. Doors at 6:30, starts at 7:00 at Berkeley High School in the Collaborative Center. So the address is 2325 Catalpa Drive in Berkeley, 2325 Catalpa Drive in Berkeley, uh, the Collaborative Center. Um, it's at my alma mater. I'm a, I'm a Berkeley Bear. And this is, I guess this is probably what was considered the cafeteria when I was there. Um, but now it's called the Collaborative Center. So it's just, it's on the, uh, north side of the building, uh, and just right off Catalpa, where there's the Circular Drive. You just park right across the street from the Circular Drive. There's, there should be ample parking there and just come across. Uh, and again, it's open to the public, it's free. And I think this is something really important that we need to, to start the discussion on. Uh, there was actually an article in the Free Press, uh, I think an editorial by the Free Press saying that this is, this is one of the top issues that needs to be addressed. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that, you know, because that's, that's the way I feel. And that's why we've been pushing this. And we scheduled this, you know, some time ago, uh, in trying to get as many people to show up as possible, to show that there is interest in, in pushing forward with, with something like this. Um, so, so yeah, just wanted to make sure everyone knows that we have that going on and, and everyone knows that they are welcome to join us there. Um, so if you have any questions or if there's ever, or if there's anything else I can answer right now, let me know. And I'll leave a few flyers here as well. Uh, we've been trying to, we posted them. They're, I think they are here in the, if they're not, I think in the community center, I don't know if there are any here. Um, but I'll leave a few extra. Uh, but again, anyone and everyone's welcome tomorrow. And separately, if, again, if there's ever anything I can do, please reach out to me. So, any other?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Representative Whittenburg, for coming and joining us. Again, um, you mentioned the redistricting. I know there was a case before the Supreme Court recently.
Arizona.
With Arizona.
Correct.
And, um, could you, um, briefly describe to our residents that process and as far as what citizens in this state have to be willing to do to get this, um, change that, that you're talking about?
Sure. Sure. So currently, the, the way it stands here in Michigan is every time there's a census. So it's every 10 years. So 2000, 2010, so 2020 would be the next time there'll be a census. And based on population is when you start to redraw the districts. So based on, you know, our, our system here of 110, uh, state house members and 38 state senators, uh, and then also congressional districts are also drawn this way as well. So based on population changes, then you get to draw those districts. But the way it's set up currently is that whoever controls the legislature is, you know, it's going to be, they're the ones that decide and they draw up the districts. So depending on who has the power, they can draw the districts in their favor.
Right.
And, and kind of try to gain more power and, and, and can, uh, you know, push as many, uh, people in the opposite party into fewer districts. So that, you know, like for example, just to, to give you an example here in Michigan, um, you know, more, again, I'm a Democrat, more, there were more votes for Democratic House candidates in the state of Michigan than for Republican House candidates. And they have a 63 to 47 majority. So even if, let's say, you know, they did some in these districts, I mean, with that, if we got more votes, worst case scenario, it should be mu- much closer.
Right.
It should be much closer. So that's the way it's currently done here in Michigan. What this, what we're pushing for is so that it will be an independent organization. And that's what happened with, with Arizona is that, that's what they had, but the legislature there was saying, no, we wanted, you know, we want to be able to control it. Uh, but the Supreme Court ruled in favor of the nonpartisan or bipartisan, whatever, an independent, uh, organization drawing the lines.
Yeah.
So here in Michigan, we, we actually do have legislation. There's been legislation introduced, uh, by my colleagues, so Democratic colleagues that, uh, introduced the legislation. But we're, we're, we're realistic. We know that it's not going to go anywhere in the legislature. So in essence, what we need to do is have a, uh, it has to be on the, on the ballot.
Okay.
And so for them to get it on the ballot, they have to do, they have to get signatures. Uh, I don't know the exact number. Uh, I think for, if this is a citizen-led initiative to amend the constitution, I think it's about 316,000 or so votes, uh, or signatures, I'm sorry, 316,000 or so signatures. And with that, obviously they have to be valid signatures. So, you know, usually you, you, you try to, for something like that, they're probably going to have to get over, you know, half a million signatures.
Right.
Uh, so it's a, it would be a costly campaign, uh, to do that, to get it on the ballot. But that's kind of what we're looking at. And that's why in other states, uh, ballot measures have been pushed for by the League of Women Voters and some other independent organizations that believe in democracy and good governance and, and want, um, you know, it's fair, the system to be as fair and not rigged as, as possible. And so that's what we're looking at here is that, again, if, we're not going to see anything happen in the legislature and it's going to have to be on the ballot. And so, again, creating the awareness that the system's just, it's rigged the way it is. And in general, I, I would hope that both sides of the aisle, I mean, listen, I, I'm not going to say Democrats in the past haven't done the same thing. I mean, the pendulum swings and it could swing back and, and who knows who will be in power, especially with term limits and, you know, who knows who's going to be there. But I think we should ultimately be moving towards, uh, you know, a, a, a different entity, not the actual legislature drawing their own lines and drawing, uh, you know, their seats and, and helping out incumbents and, you know, making it so it's easier for one party to, to hold, hold control and hold power.
So I appreciate you definitely, um, advocating for that and speaking to that, um, for our residents here in Pleasant Ridge. Um, and I encourage them all to, you know, attend the town hall tomorrow.
Thank you.
Um, I would, you know, we have an agenda item on, uh, tonight's, uh, docket calling for, um, Michigan Legislature, Legislature to ban discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Um, I was wondering if you could speak to any progress at the state level as far as expanding, uh, the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act?
I wish I could tell you about some progress because that's something I truly believe in and, and passionately. I think, uh, you should never be discriminated based on sexual orientation, gender identity. I don't think you should be discriminated for any reason.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and any kind of discrimination is wrong. And unfortunately, we haven't seen any movement on that. We've had introduction. There's, you know, again, there's some of my colleagues on the Democratic side that have introduced some bills, uh, that would expand the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. Uh, and so there's been no movement, unfortunately. Uh, I wish, I wish I could tell you different. We also heard that there was going to be a ballot drive, same kind of thing. I mean,
Yeah.
If, if anyone's paying attention, there's, there's actually quite a few things that they, they pulled their petitions, they're trying to get signatures to get things on the ballot. I've heard of at least eight different, um, measures that they're trying to put on the ballot for 2016. And that was one of them I heard, but they haven't pulled any, you know, they haven't approved any language, uh, for expanding the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act.
Okay. And I would just ask you, you know, um, based on the fact that you were one of the representatives who our, uh, resolution would be addressed to if approved, I would ask, um, do, do people in, the representatives in Lansing, um, in the state house and the state senate, um, do they put a value on such, uh, local resolutions coming from their districts or outside of the district?
Uh, honestly, I, I,
Yeah.
So far, I've, I've been there for, you know, I started in January. I haven't seen much, you know?
Okay. In your own personal,
Yeah.
Does it, uh, is it something that you?
So if, I guess it would be good in an issue where there isn't much awareness on the issue.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I think this is something that I think ends up unfortunately toeing party lines. And you'll see a lot of people on the right who just, I don't know why, they actually believe this is wrong or just aren't willing to support it. Um, and so a resolution like this, especially, you know, if it's, it's to me, you're preaching to the choir.
Right.
Uh, to some of my, you know, colleagues on, on my side of the aisle are preaching to the choir. Uh, if we can get people to, to pass resolutions in districts that might be, that might lean the other way or have a representative who votes the other way.
Yeah.
Then I think that would have a little more impact. Um, to be honest with you, you know, if something comes from anywhere in the 27th district, again, it's a very progressive district, uh, you know, I, I don't, I don't think some of the reps from outstate or, you know, that are.
District 82.
Yes, exactly. Right. I, yeah. The ones that are in the news. We have a couple, I have a couple colleagues that have been in the news. I'm sure everyone's been following that. Uh, that has been interesting. That has been interesting. But pretty sure it doesn't matter what
Right.
resolution we show them, uh, they're not willing to support, you know,
Yeah.
that. So, but I, I, listen, I, I, I'm not telling you not to do. I think it's great because I think, you know, these are the values that as a community you want to stand up for and you want to show kind of what you believe. Uh, so I think it's great. And, and you'll have me advocating on your behalf. And I think it, it can't hurt. It can't hurt. Um, and it's something that I, you know, it's more ammunition for me to listen, say like, listen, you know, when there's a community that, that truly believes this and they voted on this and they have a resolution for this because they think this works in their community or this will help their community. And so if we get enough people to really get involved, then, then hopefully we can change the tide.
Yeah.
So I, I encourage you to do it though, because I'm, I'm with you and I stand with you on this issue.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I just, I just hope that the money will come forth for ballot initiatives because it's obvious that's the only way anything's ever going to get done in the state.
So yeah, and then there's quite a few.
You know, it's just, it's not going to come out of the legislature.
That's right. That's right. So there's.
We've got to go to the people.
That's correct. And then so there's quite a few, yeah, they're talking about. There's actually three separate marijuana initiatives. Uh, there's initiative for the corporate income tax. So kind of restoring it to, or I think it's even higher than it would have been when it started. Or is it, I don't know, it goes from 6% to 11%. Actually, I don't remember what it was previously, uh, before Snyder took office. But that's something that we actually talked about in our, in the Democratic proposal to fix the roads was to have businesses come to the table. Um, and have them, you know, over the last, since 2011, when, when, Governor Snyder took office. And I, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I'll give you sort of estimates is, you know, the businesses in the state based on the corporate, corporate income tax were paying two, you know, between two and probably two and a half billion dollars a year in, in taxes. And now it's something like two or 300 million. So you think about that, that amount of money has, you know,
It's good for the roads.
Absolutely. And we, we talk about how we want a minimum of 1.5 billion dollars a year to go to fix our roads. There's the money right there. And so unfortunately, when that money came from this spot, they had to find the money elsewhere. And it's been on the backs of our working-class families. They cut money from our schools, um, from other parts of the budget. And so we think it's only fair for, for business, you know, the business community to, to, to come to the table. Uh, you know, the roads, they're, they're using the roads as well. And I think it's actually detrimental to a lot of business. I think it's a, you know, competitive disadvantage for our businesses here
Yeah.
when these are the roads that we're driving on. So, so that's another one of the ballot initiatives. There's a few other ones. Uh, oh, voting by, actually was just listening today, Jack Lessenberg had something about, um, uh, voting by mail. I think they send out, um, and I might be completely, I, I'm not completely wrong. I'm on the line, the right lines, along the lines on this one, but it's something about how that everyone get ballots just mailed to them. And then they are able to, uh, you know, mail them in or, or drop them.
That's scary.
So, yeah, some people, huh? But so, uh, that's something that would, would, would definitely make it, again, I always favor getting more people involved in the process. And whatever we can do to get more people involved in the process. And that's another one of the initiatives. There's a few others. I'm sure you can go online and look it up. I'm, I'm, you know, drawing a blank right now. But we won't know what's on the ballot until they actually get those signatures, turn in those signatures. Um, and then they have until the, the beginning of July to turn in that, the signatures, and then they have to be verified and then it can go on the ballot. So, so yeah, I'll keep you posted on, obviously, everything that's going on in Lansing. Uh, any of you reach out to me, anyone at home, reach out to me. But again, just wanted to remind people about tomorrow.
Great.
We sent this out on the e-blast. If you haven't done so already, sign up for the, the e-newsletter. Uh, it'll keep you up to date on what's going on in Lansing and when there are events like this. Uh, so if you just go on the website, wittenberg.housedemz.com and sign up, uh, and we'll, you know, we'll keep you up to date on things.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Thanks for all you're doing.
Give the toll-free number once again.
I forgot it. It's not an easy one to remember. So, yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you're, Chief.
Mayor, commissioners, residents, guests, good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody. I only have a couple items. Um, you got the info in your packet, uh, for the four crime stats show that we've had a 15% drop, um, from this time last year to last year. So that's always good news. Another thing, Thursday, uh, this goes to social media. Uh, last Thursday, August 6th, um, we had an incident on Devonshire that the Facebook page blew up with about some gunshots fired. Um, I'll back up a little bit. I understand that social media is part of our society now. It's an integral part in some people's lives. It's not so much in mine or maybe some of the other peoples here. Um, but to back up a little bit, uh, we had an incident where a resident on Devonshire called about a sick or injured raccoon in his yard. Me, myself and Sergeant Reed responded to that. A determination was made by myself that this raccoon who was A determination was made by myself that this raccoon, who was obviously not moving away from us, had labored breathing, everything else like that, was in distress, needed to be taken care of. In the past, there were avenues that we could explore, where we could take the animal to a vet, there was a humane society or something that we'd go and take care of this thing, but due to limited resources, those avenues aren't present anymore. So a determination was made by myself to put the animal there. I notified Berkeley Dispatch that there was a pending gunshot to be fired, just in case there were gonna be phone calls, which I anticipated. Unfortunately, there had to be two gunshots, not quite the shot that I used to be. Actually, the first shot wasn't quite fatal, and the animal was suffering, so a second shot hit. Before we left, now, there were two fully marked police cars on Devonshire, the new ones too, so you can really tell it's the police. The Facebook page was lighting up about gunshots. No calls were ever made to Berkeley Dispatch.
Why would you call about such a thing?
Nobody would come out and ask us if anyone was okay, but the Facebook page lit up about, wow, I wonder what happened, things like that. So it concerns us a little bit in law enforcement that people would rather have their two minutes of fame on the social media than call and investigate as to what's going on. So I would encourage people, that if they hear or see something that doesn't look right, just call us, and we can explain it to you, or we can investigate as to what's going on by sending somebody out there. I'll leave that part, I'll leave, I'll leave that part alone. Though, everyone I hope knows, it's Dream Cruise, Dream, Dream Cruise Weekend.
Get some breath.
Been up too long. You know, there's gonna be extra traffic on Woodward and in your neighborhoods, if you see something that doesn't look right, please call us, we're gonna have all eight Pleasant Ridge police officers working all day, Friday and Saturday. Extra patrol starting tomorrow evening as it starts to get busy. Know that Woodward gets shut down everywhere, from here to Birmingham and north. It's gonna be 10:00 PM on Friday and 9:00 PM on Saturday. So if you need access into your neighborhoods, because it always comes up, but I live right there, I have to get there. And it's the only way they know how to get home, so try to find an alternate route. That emergency vehicle parade, which includes police cars, fire trucks, area, which it's 15th year they're celebrating, and that's gonna be on Friday at 5:30, you know, passes right up Woodward here at Sylvan and Oakland, we shut down. But, all those cars and vehicles will be on display on Nine Mile east of Woodward, they're actually planning extra events that day, because it's the 15th year, so if you wanted to attend, you could go to that. Lastly, August 1st, I celebrated my ninth anniversary here. And a police officer. Thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to be here, to work for the city and the residents and the community, and I look forward to, God willing, many more years.
You didn't post that on Facebook?
No, I didn't.
No wonder I couldn't respond.
It's not quite the integral part of my life. Any questions, Troy?
Chief, would you feel that as a result of the Dream Cruise, we might find it more likely that someone with no pants may end up on our front porch in the morning?
Does that happen in the past?
Someone who doesn't live in the house?
It could happen. I would, I would hope that we could deter that.
I've heard things.
I hope that we could deter that.
She laughed.
Especially with eight of us.
Yeah, she's gone.
Here this weekend. Hopefully not.
Just to clarify, if somebody does show up on our porch, you need to call.
Yes.
Whether they have pants on or not.
You know what, I'm gonna have extra pants here. There's a whole locker room right behind you, there's all kinds of pants, varying sizes.
Chief, I have, you know, it's been interesting, as I'm talking to friends and neighbors, I think sometimes they hesitate to call 911 more than I think they should. Like, someone saw that car accident, you know, a car accident where it hit another car, and it was a hit-and-run and left. And, you know, they, they were calling the regular number. And I'm like, it's, there's blood, no, you gotta call 911. So, what instant, you know, I guess I want to see if you can clarify a little bit, when to call 911 and when to call the, your office.
I would say anytime that you think that life is in imminent danger, that I would call 911. If something that doesn't look, like somebody breaking into somebody's house, or that's a call 911. A, you look out and there's a dead squirrel floating in your pool or something, that's not a 911 call. And the problem is, Berkeley does our dispatching for us. They also answer the, so they answer the phones for the city of Pleasant Ridge. They also do it for the city of Huntington Woods, they also do it for the city of Berkeley. Let's say event of a power outage, or something where there's lines down and there's fires, the dispatcher, typically in Berkeley, there's two, there's an officer who runs their fire truck that comes out in case of a fire run, so there's two people in there that answer the phones. Well, the phones would light up on any 911 or emergency, bad accident, they just light up. So they might be brief, or short with you, or you don't get the full attention that you feel you deserve, because everybody's problem is unique and the most important thing to them at the time. The dispatcher doesn't see it that way, they have a job to do, and they gotta get the right people and the right equipment at that scene as immediately as possible. So sometimes they're short, I get that, complain a lot, oh, I called and somebody was rude to me, or they didn't want, seemed like to listen to me. Well, they might have heard that there's a power line down, or an accident, or something, 15 times already, so they're trying to dispatch the right people, so, again, we apologize, I mean, we pay for a service to them, you would hope that you get your money's worth, and we do, just, you don't always maybe get the satisfaction that you get. But, anything that's not life-threatening, or not in immediate danger, call the regular number. You know, the 248-541-2900. I got that right, I said, yeah, yeah. I'm kidding. But 911, if, if you think it's an emergency, call 911, they can always redirect you and say, hey, could you please hang up and call the regular number?
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful weekend. Next item is City Commission Liaison Report. First, Commissioner Krzyjak, Recreation Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Some upcoming items, I know we'll be having the discussion, it's on the agenda, of the Living Lab presentation of the Gainesboro Park project, that was discussed at our last city, or Recreation Commission meeting. We'll be going over that later this evening. But some upcoming events that I'd like to make the community aware of, that coming up on Thursday, August 20th, this is an annual event, in our pool, we'll have the synchronized swim show. We have many young residents who are working diligently to perform varying degrees of difficulty in the pool, it'll be, it's always a very enjoyable show. Another item coming up, August 30th, and this is, I don't want you to get too sad, Mayor, but August 30th will be the end-of-the-year pool party.
Oh, I still have a week before the pool party.
From 4 to 8, it'll be a celebration of the, the end of summer, with the pool to close on the following Monday, September 7th, Labor Day. And finally, I'd also like to encourage residents to attend the Box Castle Building Event, which this year will be on Saturday, September 12th, will start around 11:00 AM. So if you and your kids are interested, or kids of all ages, are welcome to come and help us build our big box castle over at the community center. And in preparation for that, we're currently taking any boxes you may have, whether it's a refrigerator, a moving box of any size, really, any boxes of any, cardboard boxes of any size that you would put to the curb or recycle, you can contact our Recreation Department, and we'll come by and pick them up, and we'll use them on September 12th, and then we'll recycle all the boxes that we've collected for that event. So, please keep us in mind, if you're lucky enough to have a new appliance, we'd love to have your, the cardboard box, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Foreman?
Mr. Mayor, my report this month is very brief, there was no school board meeting this month, but I have more to say, as always. So I mentioned something last month about the pond improvements that they were looking to raise money for, the high school slash middle school. Just an update on that, the pond improvements are underway, so that's, that's happening. Thank you for anyone that donated, that's made a difference. Two upcoming events, Monday, August 17th is the next school board meeting, so, I'll be there, but if you'd like to join me, you're more than welcome. This will be at a new location, it's at the high school where the administrative offices have moved to, it used to be at the Harding Administration Building, so now it'll be in the media center at the high school. Last item is something that also parents could be happy, could be sad about, it's the first day of school, and that's September 8th. I know our household would be quite pleased with that date. That happens to also be, I believe, our next City Commission meeting. And that is it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Perry, Planning and DDA?
The Planning Commission and DDA held their monthly meeting on July 27th. The Planning Commission voted to adopt the Woodward 696 Complete Streets Study as the first component of the Pleasant Ridge Complete Streets Plan. They also received an update on the traffic calming pilot projects for Ridge Road and the alleyway between Kensington and Devonshire. And there were lots of interesting ideas that the city presented, the staff did, I mean, it's, it's gonna be very interesting. They're gonna start to implement these test programs after the kids get back in school on September 8th sometime. So then, the Planning Commission and DDA will not be meeting in August, so the next meeting will be held on Monday, September 28th at 7:00 PM right here, at City Hall.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott? Historical Commissioner, you should be quick.
It is quick, the Historical Commission is honoring the time, honor tradition of not doing anything in August. So we have our next meeting in September, it'll be September 2nd, please join us, everyone's always welcome to the Historical Commission meetings, and look forward to seeing you then.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question for Commissioner Scott, is the historical museum not open this weekend?
I don't think we have a date selected for August, is that also the case?
August is the same as Green Cruise, and we never open?
Ah, that's right, yes. So no, no opportunity in August, but stay tuned for September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the consideration of the following consent agenda, we have six items, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would ask that we remove item F from the consent agenda, and follow up with it later.
All right, we'll remove F and move it to the end of the... So do I have a motion to approve the five items on the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move the consent agenda be approved without item F, which will be added later. Take a second?
Second.
Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is presentation by Living Lab regarding the Gainesboro Park improvements.
We brought some 11 by 17 copies, just so you can have them in front of you as we're moving along some of the slides of the plans, and I'll just kinda hand them over.
Can you come here, cause you're having the TV.
So turn it left side?
Yeah, you just wanna, you got to be out in front.
Second?
Hi. Jesus, right there.
Okay, good. This side? I have no stage presence.
Cameras looking all the way at the screen.
My name's Leah Goraya with Living Lab, my partner Jay McDonald is here as well. Courtney sends her apologies, but she had a long-time scheduled vacation with her family this week, so she wasn't able to make it. Let me start by saying, every time I come to the City Commission meeting, and this is only my second time, I learn so much about so many, I think the last commission meeting was when Jim was educating me and everyone else on the funding or financing of the court system and how that all works. Tonight, I'm hearing about how redistricting happens, and to keep my pants on when in public...
Only when you're sleeping on doorstep.
No, I intend to keep them on, and I'll tell... And I know what to do with my boxes, yeah. All right, as you, as many of you know, and there's a lot of familiar faces in the audience here as well, we were here for five days in July to get to know the park better, to get to know Gainesboro Park better, to watch how people were using the park over the time that we were there, to get input from residents and people that are interested and have passionate opinions about what they'd like to see in the park, what they'd like to see happen, what they wouldn't like to see happen in the park. And then to use that to develop an initial concept plan that's based on that, that input and kind of what we saw, and some initial thoughts that we feel about the park. Before I get into the slides here, I also wanted to say just how much we appreciated the hospitality that we had while we were here. It was a lot of work leading up to the event, to, you know, arrange to have a tent, and tables, and chairs, and everyone was just so accommodating and helpful, and making sure that we were comfortable while we were here, and we could get the work done and have a lot of fun doing it. So, thank you to your staff, and Commission, and residents, everybody was very gracious.
Threw an ice cream party for us?
Yeah.
Started off.
Threw an ice cream party. So tonight, we wanted to give an overview of that process. I think, you know, as I said, many of you were involved or stopped in at different points during the five-day event, but we never really closed the loop all back together to kind of talk about what happened, what, some of the things we heard, and then kind of review the concept plan in its entirety. So that's what we're here, a primary goal of our discussion tonight. Review that concept plan, cost impacts of it, and then also to discuss the next steps. And I think Jim has outlined a process, or proposed a process, to have a series of meetings with Recreation Commission, with City Commission again, to achieve a consensus concept plan, and then be able to use that to move forward in construction documents. So we just wanted to review those items with you tonight. Certainly, you know, the five-day process, and I think when we came to first talk to you about the project, and about what you'd, you know, like to see the process be, and some of our ideas for the process, is really focused about on community-driven design, and support, and considerable input from your residents. I think your representative was here tonight saying that it's always good to get more people involved, more opinions, and I think we certainly saw that from our perspective in the five days that we were here, listening to folks, and starting to work on some different ideas. So as Jay indicated, it started with the awesome partnership with your ice cream social event at Gainesboro Park, and we really couldn't have asked for anything better, maybe a little bit cooler for Jay that was walking around, and a little more ice cream, maybe. But, it was just amazing to see how many folks that you had come down to the park, and visiting with their neighbors, and then we were just having some quick opportunities for people to stop into the tent and give us some of their ideas for the park. So we had three stations set up, we're estimating, we think we had about 200 people pass through the tent that night.
Wow.
And, you know, we didn't have a total sign-in for all of those, but I think that that's a pretty close ballpark, based on the number of sheets that we counted, and the input that we collected, and kind of compiled after the event. So, we had three stations set up that night, one was an idea quilt, where people could come in and use their skills at drawing different ideas for Gainesboro Park, and we were putting those up and kind of making a quilt of different ideas and input of what folks would like to see. We also had a station where people could, on every half hour, Jay would lead a group around the park to walk, to talk about areas they like, areas they don't like, what they'd like to see in different places of the park, and really get into a little bit more detailed discussion and input. And then we also had a station set up that night, where folks could fill in the blank of what they'd like to see at Gainesboro Park, and we had a lot of great input. of what they'd like to see at Gainesboro Park, and we had a lot of great input received that way, and then you can see we kind of put that up on the back wall. And just as interesting to me as the ideas people had was just the way people would kind of walk up and down the wall of ideas and kind of take it all in and say, "Oh, yeah, that would be really cool," or "Oh, that's just what I said," and, you know, just kind of listening to those comments was a really, really neat thing to witness. We also had some more detailed conversations. You know, the Ice Cream Social night was opportunities to come in for two or three minutes, 15 minutes, kind of give some initial thoughts about the park and talk to us about how people use the park or would like to use the park. We got into a little more detail with some conversations that were focused on particular topics, and the four topics were active seniors, young families, gardens and art, and walking paths and connections. And we took some of the notes, we took notes during these different conversations, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of the pieces of input, just to give you some examples of some of the things we heard. So senior, active seniors, agility trails and exercise stations for all ages, the tennis courts are in poor condition for real tennis players, which I'm not sure what real tennis players means, but definitely not the only time we heard comments about the tennis court condition and the desire to make improvements there. Folks just want a quiet, peaceful place to meet, to gather, to read, to play checkers. And there also was interest of having a path within the park, but also a path that connected into the neighborhoods and to other destinations in and around the community. Young families conversation, and these discussions were, I'd say, 45 minutes to an hour long each, a little smaller intimate table setup. Some of the young family comments resurfacing the basketball and tennis courts. Folks really liked the large open spaces because yards generally in Pleasant Ridge are smaller. Once kids are reaching, you know, maybe age four or five, they're getting in trouble a lot by throwing the ball in their backyard, and so they'd like, you know, just some open space to just do informal play. More seating, covered shade, and someone made a comment about lack of flow. Many elements are breaking up the park. It's such a linear, linear space that they were concerned about. Gardens and art conversation topic. I think there was a common theme throughout the input that we received about making sure we're thinking about sustainability, and the sustainability on a number of avenues, but, you know, there was discussion about using native plants and rain gardens and bio swales and permeable pavers. They don't want the park to be paved over, that they need the green space, so try and be as minimally intrusive as possible, including public art within the park and throughout the city as a whole. And then there was some really, you know, I think sensitive comments about understanding maintenance implications of whatever gets planned, and that, you know, we need to really be keeping that in mind and that some of the volunteer groups in the community might be overtaxed already in some of their areas that they're attempting and trying to keep up and make nice, and they just want to make sure that those are being thought of and the maintenance of them are being thought of as the plan moves forward. And then finally, we had a topic discussion about connections in general. I think connections and connectivity for walking and bicycling and strollers and wheelchairs and walkers was really a common theme throughout the whole five-day process, and then the desire for continuous pathway from one end of the park to the other and into the neighborhoods, an overall connected non-motorized system, and then movement of the community garden. And that might fall into the community garden topic as well. That was discussed at pretty great length with a number of folks and groups, and the desire from the community garden side of it to be able to get more sun, I was going to say more shade, you don't want more shade, more sun, and thinking about moving that north where there's a sunnier area, and then being able to connect the park with pathways with the movement of that element. So from the input that we had received over those few days, a vision statement started to develop, and we started to work on one and kind of refine it and have it up for comments and tweak it here and there. And as it stands now, it's a connected, well-maintained, well-used, year-round space for all to enjoy in a setting that encourages friendship, wellness, creativity, interactions, respect for the environment, and learning, and we would be run out of town if we...
Wow.
If the turtle is not remaining in the park. So we, I think that needs to remain in the vision statement so that we continue to move in the right direction.
He'll be watching.
I know, he kind of creeps me out.
Dead eyes.
But he's there, he's going to be there.
We love him.
We also had, over, I think it was Friday and Monday of the five-day session, some smaller meetings. We met with your maintenance staff, folks, and walked the park with them to understand their perspective and input and what, you know, how they use the space, what their needs are, what makes it easier and more sustainable from a maintenance perspective. So we got some really good input from there. You know, we were getting to some detail about how wide their mowers are so that we're not, you know, planting things too close that they have to get off and hand-whip areas, you know, that if we can make some accommodations early in the process, I think we can, you know, really solve some of their concerns or issues. We met with your playground equipment supplier onsite to just talk about the equipment that you put in last year and different possibilities and how they could work with us in the community to move forward with additional play equipment if that's the direction the city goes. We had a detailed meeting with city commissioners, and we also invited adjacent residents to come in and talk. And then, as the photo here shows, we also just had the park shelter building open for people to come in and drop in and kind of watch us as we're starting to put pen to paper and how the design's evolving and just be able to kind of peek over our shoulder and give input as we were moving along. Monday night of the five-day session was a couple-hour event that we were calling the prioritization pit stop. And then we were at the point in the process where we had some draft ideas down on paper, hanging up on the tent wall, some of the key elements that we are hearing, there was a desire to have in the park, and our thoughts about how those could fit into the space. And we had about 70 people pass through that Monday night. And the idea behind it was to come in, take a look at what some of the thoughts about the park design and concept were so far, and it kind of fell into maybe, I think these are 10 boxes and 10 kind of elements or bigger ideas about, about the park moving forward. We gave everyone $1,000 of fake money to put into the boxes and just a quick way for us to get an idea, you know, they could put all $1,000 in one box, they could spread it out if that's how they felt, a quick way for us to get an idea about priorities in the community. So that was really good input that we received as well. And you can kind of see our counting of the bills the next morning of where that fell in. Intergenerational heart of the park is really the area around the park shelter and the playground equipment in there, and it included quite a few elements, connecting paths, the promenade idea for Gainesboro, all received quite a bit of attention with people's dollars. During the July events, and it's actually still up as well, we also wanted to provide the opportunity for online input via a site called My Sidewalk, and so we asked about those same priorities. This one, we couldn't offer money, but we said to pick your top four of the 10, just to, again, get a quick reaction from folks about what their priorities are. Small-scale play area, connecting paths, promenade, heart of the park were the ones that came up with the most. Not a ton of involvement there. I think this is eight or nine people's responses on the online survey, but nonetheless, it's eight or nine additional folks giving their ideas. Then finally, Tuesday night, we concluded the input sessions with a community celebration where we had a lot of the concept plan hung up on the wall, and then we also were starting to compile these idea boards and trying to capture imagery of other existing facilities or pictures that we felt were starting to capture what we were hearing and some of the things that we were starting to propose on the concept plan. And folks could kind of walk through, ask us questions, and we kind of talked about the different elements of that in a little more detail. And we ran out of the yellow tape and had to move to my Michigan State duct tape, so the Spartans were well represented that night. So that's just an overview of the five-day process and the different input opportunities that there were and some of the different things that we heard. We do have detailed meeting summaries and notes that we took at the meetings that, I don't know if we've already provided them, if we haven't, we can very easily and get those out to you if you're interested. But that culminated in the concept plan graphic that you see in front of you tonight and on the screen and in the slides, and Jay's just kind of walked through some of those different areas and elements and move along. The one with no arrow that some people have been getting?
Well, you may have picked up on a theme that we talked to a lot of people, and whether they know it or not, they gave us their ideas or essentially they gave us their concepts for the park. And from that grew this concept plan that you see tonight and that you see before you. I guess you can call it Concept Plan 1.0, but we definitely spoke with a lot of people at the focus conversation groups and the drop-in design sessions and the prioritization And I can honestly say, we can honestly say that probably 95%, 99% of what we heard is somehow in some form implemented in the, in the concept plan that I'm going to walk through with you tonight. Some of the common themes that we heard, and this isn't in any particular order of priority or anything like that, some of the highlights are the prioritization on connection. And the park itself is connected very well to the surrounding neighborhood. The problem seems to be the connection from south to north, north to south, and then maybe even into the surrounding neighborhood. So that's definitely something that we wanted to look at and improving. And the, another element was the sustainable initiative. Almost everybody we talked to was aware of sustainable elements, native plantings, habitat creations. One of the major things, though, that people really wanted to talk about was the ability and the elements and effort to capture stormwater runoff before it gets into the combined sewer system, especially, what was it, a year ago today with the flooding that happened? People are very aware of that. So that was a lot of the conversation that we had about the park, and you'll find some elements of that in the concept plan. Also, amenities throughout the park, and these are just simple things that make the park more usable, more comfortable, more enjoyable for people. They can be anything from a drinking fountain to a bike rack to benches. It really could be any number of things. And then, one of the other things that was discussed a lot was adult fitness stations and the, it's pretty self-explanatory, but I was, to be honest, surprised at how much traction it gained throughout the five days because it's, it's not just for older people or adults. People were saying you can do this kind of thing with your children and teach them the values of exercise and getting out and being outside, and then people were saying, "Well, kids will just play on it anyways. It's just like another playset to them," which is fine, I guess. I mean, it is what it is. Kids will be like them. One of the, before I get into the specific detail here, one of the major items that we talked about was the connectivity throughout the whole park, or in other words, designing it so it feels like one holistic park. And just for purposes of going through the presentation, we've broken it up, but we really do feel that the concept design brings the whole, the whole park together in a way that the connectivity is very good. But I'm going to start with the Flimfield area. This is at the southern end of the park, and overall, there was a general desire to improve the athletic facilities, and by that I mean the fields, the baseball diamond, the benches, the fencing. Also to, if I can flip back one, I have this handy-dandy laser here too. Down here, we were, we were highlighting an area that maybe a secondary, smaller play structure could be, so it could be a destination for smaller kids that aren't necessarily playing sports, but it could draw people down, draw families down to the southern end of the park and get some population going down there. As I mentioned, the improvements to the fields, there was a, I think, I think this specific area deserves a little more attention as we move forward because there's a lot of different options. It's tough to pinpoint exactly what should be done, so that's definitely an area, as you move forward, should be discussed in a little more detail. I talked about the small-scale play area, you know, more of a natural play type area for kids, to bring them down to that area. The next zone was, we're calling the central zone, and obviously, there's a lot going on there. We heard ideas and we tried to implement ideas of improving the courts, both the tennis courts and basketball courts, implementing pickleball courts in, along with the tennis courts as a way of striping them differently. The Gainesboro Promenade is an idea, well, I've got my wrong pointer going on here. There we go. Right here, what we're calling this the Gainesboro Promenade, and that is actually Gainesboro Avenue, and that would be modified to be more of a pedestrian way. And if, I guess if I had my choice, I would say no vehicles at all, only emergency vehicles, but that's an internal decision I think that needs to be made as we move forward. But it's a, it would be a beautiful route from the south end to the north end or into the heart of the park that, when detailed right, could really be an enjoyable space. There could be stormwater management opportunities along that in the way of bio cells or rain gardens, and then overall, it's just a strong visual element, connection element. So now, when you're at the, what we're calling the heart of the park over here by the shelter and you look down, you see the DPW building and some overgrowth, and it's not very inviting, but maybe we can change that into something that's a lot more inviting to draw people down into that area. The DPW area, that's the, this is the older building. This is the newer warehouse or pole barn, whatever you guys want to call it. There is definitely room for improvement in terms of screening. We can, we can look at, I had a couple images here, like a green wall or some landscape screening, possibly painting. Again, that could be talked about in a little more detail as we move forward. The heart of the park is, if you remember from the slide that Leah showed of the prioritization pit stop, it had a list of things about as long as my arm, and that, it received the most votes, partly because it has the most items in it that people are very favorable to. And that's, that's very telling because it, the intergenerational part, I think, is very telling, that people want a very family-friendly, not just for little kids, but for older people as well, a place to relax, a place to feel safe and enjoy the park, even though it, this area, this area may be right now designated specifically for younger children, why not expand it a little bit and make it appropriate for everybody? So that's what we tried to do with this, with this specific design, is to try and accommodate everybody in a design that's favorable and that incorporates the whole list of ideas that you saw in that, in that one voting box. Here's some other ideas that were thrown out there. I won't read through all of them, but definitely some, some simple things. There's some more complicated things as well, but it's all, it's all things that probably you heard as well as we did, and we definitely think there's a way to implement all of those things into the, into the heart of the park. And then moving, moving north, these are some other images that we, we thought captured the intent fairly well. Seating, playing, just sitting, reading, climbing. Moving north of that, what we're calling the open spaces, which are understated, yet everybody felt they were very, very important. They're flexible, unprogrammed, free-play type of spaces where you can, you can either play or you can throw a blanket down and have a picnic. It's appropriate for all types of things. And aside from, you know, creating some boundaries or creating some limits, it's a fairly simple thing to do and it's, it's a very enjoyable place for people. thing to do and it's a very enjoyable place for people. And then, let's do some more images of an open space condition. Moving even further north to the north end, we were talking about the community garden and dog room. Overwhelmingly, people say, said it needed to be relocated, and that's what we're showing up in the very far northeast corner. A lot more sunshine there, and we could provide some parking for it, and the pathway can extend into that area and re, kind of reorganize the dog entrance fence. Again, that's, this is a conceptual idea right now. It can be done, whether or not you want to do it. That's to be determined in the future. But these are things that, some of the details need to be ironed out as you move forward. Specifically, the size of this community garden, the construction of the community garden, there's a lot of different things that I'm sure, maybe there's programming or a volunteer effort or a give-back effort to the community. You know, we had a lot of vegetables, let's maybe hand them out to people who need food. So that's basically going through the, what is it, five sections of the park. And if you do have questions about any one of those elements, it doesn't matter to me if you want to wait till the end or if you want to interrupt me now, I can try and answer any questions you have. If not, we can get into what we're calling the cost impact exercise. Does anybody have questions? They want to stop me right now? Okay, I'll keep going. This is a fancy term for a cost estimate. And the reason we called it an exercise is because it really was an exercise to us in understanding what people wanted. It's very much based on the conceptual plan that people gave us their ideas and we implemented onto paper. It's an understanding and realizing what people's wish list looks like in plan form or in a concept plan, and then also understanding how those things impact the overall cost of the project. And one of the things we highlighted at the bottom, very important in our minds to express to the city, is that this is definitely a tool used to discuss priorities, explore individual projects, level of impact, and funding mechanisms. We, as the designers, made some educated assumptions. We can, you know, on materials, quantities, selection of different things, and we can go into that in detail if you'd like. So what we did is we worked up a high range of costs and a lower range of costs. And based on the conceptual plan that you see in front of you, we developed a high end that came in at about 1.5 million. And this includes a 15% contingency, which is standard for planning at this stage of the game. It's very conceptual, so it gives you a little buffer in terms of budgeting. The lower end is at a little over $1 million. That also includes the contingency. And when I said we made some educated assumptions, to back down into that lower number, we reduced some quantities of things. We sometimes eliminated some things that we felt would not compromise the integrity of the design that still achieved the concepts that people wanted to see in their park. There was a reduction in some landscaping. And I can get into some other things if you need to know in detail, some things that were eliminated or reduced in order to bring this number down. But we feel confident that this is a, this is definitely a starting point, and we realize that it's over your initial budget. But I think we can start now to talk about, since we have this starting point, we can start talking about strategies to bring it even lower or break some things out into different type of phasing opportunities or look for funding from different sources. And really, it's going to be a lot of working together to get what you want, but still be within your financial budget as we move forward. And speaking of moving forward, these are the next steps in the process. Later this month, the Recreation Commission meeting, they're going to hear the very same thing that you hear tonight. And then September 8th, we're going to, I mean, it explains, I don't need to read it to you, I'm sure, but all the way through to October, November, we're going to keep following up with this, and we're going to keep working with you guys and communicating and understanding what you guys want. And it's all in an effort to hone this down into exactly what you want in your park. So I can back up to any of the slides if you'd like to, and I can talk about any of the details if you'd like to. I can leave it, how about I leave it here for now and maybe we can highlight some things?
Jay, thank you for that. Thank you. Just a question on the heart of the park area. Would you mind going into some of the detailed items that would be part of that in this concept?
Yep.
I know there's a lot of interest in it. I wasn't able to participate.
Okay.
I think that might feature for a lot of people.
Yeah, maybe just start with orienting the drawings.
Yeah, this is the, what I'm outlining here is the existing shelter. What you see sticking off of the shelter is a proposed pavilion structure. So it would be actually constructed into the same roof of it, but stick, it would be an open air, just a, you know, a covering that you can have a grill behind it perhaps and some seating. And then in front of it is a, if you can envision a pergola-type structure, like a cafe-type seating area. And this would be slightly sunken, maybe one and a half to two feet below the sidewalk areas. So it would, although it would be very, very close to the existing children's playground, you would feel separated from it enough, but your proximity would still be very close. For example, if you have a kid playing and you need to be close to them, but yet feel like you're a little further away so you can perhaps talk to your friends. There's just a little bit of a realignment of sidewalk, and this is the main spine or the main path that goes from north to south with some spurs off of the side of it. This is a proposed larger play area for older kids from five to 12. This is for kids ages up to five, and this is, would be specifically designed for children that are from five to 12 to get a little more challenging play. And then back in here is what we're calling kind of our wooded nature area. There's some mounded berms, there's some tunnels, there's some boulder formations where kids can get back in here and feel like they're really in the woods. There would be a train-type viewing, perhaps hill or educational sign of the train that goes by where people can learn. And these are, these would be gardens maintained perhaps by the garden club, perhaps by somebody else. There's some smaller things like art elements, maybe even add a little water bubbling feature, outdoor umbrella tables. Trying to think if I missed anything here. It's kind of, you know, we're kind of massaging some things in there in between what you have existing and trying to make it feel like a cohesive space that feels good, that doesn't feel too crowded, but it's, it still gives people maybe a good garden feel where you can relax, just, you know, just like the, what did prioritization pit stop call it? The intergenerational, losing my mind here. Heart of the park, yeah, intergenerational heart of the park.
Jay, um, excuse me.
That's all right. I'm trying to think of other things that I missed.
Well, just, I was going to point your attention to the bottom left there.
Yep, this area?
Yes.
That?
Is that a structure? If you could describe what the intention is there?
That is a, one of the items, for example, when we tried to reduce the cost of the budget, that we said, that's not specifically necessary to the concept of the park. That's, what's shown there is a secondary pavilion. That's not quite as big as this one, but maybe some, it would be an opportunity for people to rent out for a, maybe a small birthday party or just a gathering of a club or something like that. It would be a covered, open-air structure.
I think it was like the footprints, maybe three or four picnic table?
Yeah.
In terms of the amount of quantity kind of area.
Yeah.
So if people were looking for a place for like birthday parties and stuff like that, that is potentially something we could shave off and then that'd be...
This would probably be able to accommodate anything that maybe residents would want in terms of renting out a pavilion, having access to the shelter. But, you know, we were thinking, in the event that maybe somebody else did, that you could have a smaller, secondary type of place that you could have reserved for any sort of activity.
So really, the intention was if you had multiple events?
Yeah.
Trying to use the space at the same time?
Right.
Okay.
I think the footprint of the structure, the covered structure that's attached to the park shelter building is approximately, if you can remember, the tent that was set up for the workshops?
Yeah.
About in that size range. So it's a decent size. I think the other thought was that people had given input about shaded seating areas and places to gather, and if there are events in some of the bigger spaces, that there'd still be able to be a place for me to go with my three kids and sit down and pop up our lunchbox and have another, you know, another opportunity, another option of a place.
Well, that, I would, go ahead.
I was going to say, one of the things that kind of inspired us, and we saw how popular this area was, was the block party for, I believe it was Amherst. They were there the Saturday, and we were thinking, wow, that's great, they could really use something like this. But then if that was being used and people still wanted to have a, you know, something smaller, they could have that over there. It's definitely not a necessary part of the concept plan, and if you took it away, it wouldn't ruin the plan at all, and it's just kind of a bells and whistles thing.
Well, one thing I think is obvious is that, and we've discussed it, the commission as a group and, you know, talking to residents, is with these improvements, you're going to have a lot more people who want to use the space, right? So like, we witnessed on the Saturday of the Amherst party, we had the, you know, Living Lab was on site, the Amherst party was kind of setting up. Other people were just flowing in to use the space. And, you know, on the design end, you know, you definitely want to create something where it can accommodate having a party or having a group activity, but not cutting off the usage for just casual users who may just want to, you know, hang out, use the park, so.
No, I think that's a good point, is that I don't think you ever want people to feel like they're not welcome to come to the park, even if there is an event going on or a party going on or a barbecue or...
I think there's also a lot of opportunity, and we were kind of talking about it. Sorry, I'm dancing here. Talking about it while we were there and then talking about it while we were looking at the plan and going through the cost estimating exercise, is there's elements that I think lend well to even a phasing approach, too. And let's, and let's build something, see how it's working, see how people are using it, and see if you have different needs. And I think the important thing at this stage is that you start to set up areas where those things can happen in an intentional way, in a planned-out way. So, you know, I think as you and the Rec Commission and we get into the challenging discussions about budget and elements to move forward into the construction documents, is that one of phasing and having that opportunity in the future, you know, future years, you know, maybe it's two years from now where you need additional covered seating, so. But I don't think we want to ignore it at this stage because we want to know where it would make sense to be and not put it right in the middle of some other space that was intentionally designed, so.
Yeah, Leah brings up a good point, is that, and I guess I forgot to mention this, is that when you, at the concept planning phase, we wanted to create a plan that incorporated everybody's ideas. And you kind of need to go all the way to that end to then be able to back some things out because you don't want to, right off the bat, not include ideas that are very important and also could be implemented in the future. Like Leah said, you want to be able to add those things in, but not have it feel awkward. So it has to be planned out, but then you can always back off of it a little bit.
Do you guys think with the covered space next to the building, I think one of the things that, you know, we're going to be struggling with is the phasing of this?
Mm-hmm.
And I kind of like the idea, one of the things we talked about was the cheap-ish kind of movable seating and movable tables.
Yeah.
And I really like the idea of living with the park for a couple of years after we get a lot of the improvements done, before we do anything permanent with the gathering space? Because I think it is important to just watch how people use the space. And if we can put some movable tables out there and let people sort of organize the space themselves and just watch how that makes sense before we put any permanent structures. You know, it's kind of like when you move into a house, sometimes it makes sense to live in it for a few years for a minute in the kitchen.
Or unpack for a minute.
Or unpack, right, yes. If we had kids before we had to clean out a bedroom, so, yeah, I get that. But, you know, is there a way that we could do something that approximates the covered space next to the shelter?
Yeah.
In an inexpensive way, before we do sort of the permanent, you know, since that's a gabled roof coming off and matches the architecture?
No, that's, yeah.
You know, is, can we do something with post and beam and flat roof to just cover it and then see how people use it before we do anything permanent?
Yeah, that can definitely be explored. And one of the things that pops into my head is similar to what you already have right here, what we call a shade sale, some people call them different things. It's not weatherproof, but it provides shade. You could create some sort of covering, shade covering in this area, but then we could take it to the next level and find something that's, that won't let rain through, that could be waterproof underneath and...
Yeah. I think, I think as you move forward in the process and we move forward with you in the process and looking at the phasing and hearing about people's priorities and ideas, and we develop more ideas about the phasing, too, is just keeping in mind construction sequencing and there are some efficiencies you can get with your mobilization of your contractor that would be out there doing construction and that. So I think we'll want to keep that in mind, like, is it, kind of like some email exchanges that we've had already about cost-benefit analysis almost of, you know, is it going to be, if it's a shade sale versus the more permanent structure, does it save you a certain dollar amount now, but if you did it later, it'll be even more money because it's just a single little build for a contractor? So I think we'll just kind of have to keep having those discussions. I think there's a lot of opportunity, certainly.
Can you, one thing that, Jay, you jumped across pretty quickly, I think the, and this is, you know, I don't think it's my secret, I've been very interested in the promenade because it's going to reclaim space, it's going to increase the park. And you think you jumped over kind of your image for sort of what it ends up looking like.
Yeah, let me, I can try and explain that a little bit better. What it, what our vision is, is to, if you can imagine the existing Gainesboro Avenue, remove a portion of it so it's for, the new promenade would be 14 feet wide. I think the existing street is 24 feet or 28 feet wide. So you would essentially repurpose the road into more of a pedestrian walkway and then detail the outsides of it with some nice landscaping, perhaps some elements to capture rainwater, bio cells or bio swales, whatever you prefer to call them. And then you can add some things along like bike racks and benches and really make it feel like what we're calling a promenade or a very formal walkway instead of feeling like a street. Right now, there's barely enough room for a sidewalk and a tree, or this would allow you to have a very generous walkway, but also open up some areas for some nice landscaping and some nice amenities. And I don't know, is, that's kind of the design intent in our head, but there's really a lot of, a lot of different options. And I don't know if you want to talk more about your vision for it, but it's, I think that was, that was essentially it, right? Turning it into a more of a pedestrian-friendly.
Yeah, I mean, I would ultimately like to see it turn into part of the park.
Yeah.
So it is, you know, totally pedestrian. And I see about 14-foot pathways, emergency vehicles can get down there if they have to. But on a day-to-day basis, the 90 cars a day that drive down there certainly don't need to drive down that stretch of road. So, you know, let's turn it into a park, let's increase the park.
And that's a great way of putting it, is make it feel like it's a part of the park instead of make it feel like a road that runs along the side of the park. And that would, that would be the goal of the final product.
I'd argue, I'd argue that it also allows us to make the entrances to the park more significant. So as you enter Amherst or Wellesley, you, it's the impression that you've arrived at something.
Right. And one of the things we sort of were kicking around during the design of Charette was creating a landmark, you know, whether it's a pillar or, you know, some sort of entry feature that's at the end of all of the streets that demarcates that point of your leaving and entering the park. You know, that sense of arrival and replicating that, you know, at all of the, where all the streets terminate coming in.
That, for example, is shown like right at the end of Maywood. That is, that would be kind of a decorative paver thing with maybe an art element that shows that you've entered the park and then you can head left to the Gainesboro. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's...
Excuse me, Jay?
Yeah.
Just one question on the promenade. There's one home, and I think it's at the top of Wellesley, it's Bill's house, isn't it? The driveway empties onto Gainesboro.
Yeah.
It's actually...
It's at Amherst.
There's two.
There's two of those. The one hits on Wellesley. The, the one hits on Wellesley, um, we could actually just save part of Gainsborough by you bend the promenade at that point, and just build him a new driveway using the existing part of Gainsborough Street, so he would have access straight out to Wellesley.
And that on Amherst?
The one on Amherst is trickier. That would be one house that we would have to basically allow to use the promenade to access their garage, and that would be something that we would have to design in, um, so we're cognizant of that. So I think we can get it down to one house that will have a garage that continues to access that.
Um, one thing I didn't get into, this is a kind of a reorientation of the parking lot that's currently next to the basketball courts, so the basketball courts were reoriented. This was opened up into a little more green space with the, a rain garden in here, and this would provide a little bit more direct access into the parking lot here. We did hear that there was kind of a shortage of parking at times when there is an event going on, like a sporting event, but they said, people also said, right after that, they don't mind parking on the street. I'm not sure if the residents on that street minded, but people didn't mind.
And this maintains about the same number of parking spaces that are out there now.
Yeah.
Just gets rid of a lot of...
Yeah, that parking lot's pretty large, if you, if you go out there, that, all the turning radiuses, and I think it used to have a center island in it, is what we had heard historically, that you could kind of drive up and around, and that was taken out. So it's sort of a much bigger pavement footprint than you need to accommodate that many parking spaces.
Are there any other questions, comments?
It's a lot to digest, so please, you know, if you...
It's beautiful work.
Yes.
And it's nineteen.
Very aspirational.
We will post the, uh, our presentation, right, on the website, the city's website, on the DTE, uh, sorry, the Gainsborough Park, um, to engage.
I just want to say I'm glad that we picked Living Lab. This has been, it's been a great experience so far. By the, by the way, how's that DTE perk going? I saw that they were going ahead, right?
Comments for another day.
Yeah, we'll have a few beers and talk about it.
I'd love to.
No, I would just, um, add and ask, um, so the next opportunity for residents to participate would be the August 26th Recreation Commission meeting, and that's gonna be at the community center at 7:00, so, um, the Recreation Commission will be going over these plans, going over the cost estimates, um, that'll be an opportunity for the residents, uh, to really contribute to that discussion. What is, and this could be to Jim or Leah, Jay, I know you talked about the usage of My Sidewalk, and how it enabled nine people to, to get their opinions in. As the residents kind of get more accustomed, or more, um, familiar with the, the plans as are right now, um, and seeing as there's no more really, there's no more engagement sessions that Living Lab is gonna be holding, what are the plans for My Sidewalk going forward?
Um, I think there is, without much effort, a really easy ability to add some questions and ability to comment on the plans now that they're out. So, um, yeah, I mean, I mean, if we want to, do you want to wait till after the commission, the Recreation Commission meeting, perhaps, or do you want to?
Well, I...
Now that it, will it be out now immediately and just have, we can structure some questions and run them past...
Yeah, I would, you know, I would feel comfortable with you and, uh, Jim working on that, as far as devising something that you would feel useful. I just, I kind of want to keep that open.
Keep the line open.
Now that, you know, the, the plans are out there and, and people kind of have someplace outside of the, the, the meeting schedule, which, in addition to the Recreation Commission meeting, you know, will be discussing this in, up until the December 10th, um, final approval, um, but yeah, just to give residents another kind of way that they can get their two cents in.
Follow-up question on the My Sidewalk, um, I've found that smaller bits of information or smaller polls that don't take a lot of time to answer seem to be the most popular, and that's just anecdotal, but that's my finding. Um, the question is, and maybe this is a technical question you can't answer, but the polls that are set up on My Sidewalk, do you know that they have their own individual link that could be shared, for example? Like, hey, here's a link to this particular poll, then three days later, here's a link to this other poll, not just to the site where you browse all the different things.
Yes, there are, and we can put that, like, even put that particular question, like, in a box on your city website, you know, if there's just one question.
Yeah.
It's really pretty flexible.
Maybe.
Oh, sort of.
See, if we can publicize it in other ways, you know, the city's Facebook page, for example, if it's a link directly to that poll, or however may be.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
Okay, all right. Thank you again.
Yes, thank you very much.
Next, next item, resolution urging DTE electricity to exercise due care and restraint in trimming and removing trees. Jim?
Okay, I have to do something again here. Uh, this is, my bookmark and my agenda is taking me the wrong place, bear with me. Um, as you know, DTE has been engaged in tree trimming in a number of nearby communities, and controversy seems to follow closely. So what we are proposing tonight at staff level is a resolution for adoption by the city commission, encouraging DTE Energy to, uh, to conduct their tree trimming operations with a scalpel rather than hacksaw. We know that it's necessary to conduct tree trimming operations to maintain reliable electrical service. We also know that DTE and consumers were ordered by the Public Service, Michigan Public Service Commission, to more aggressively address trees that are located outside of their easements. Um, and that's an important distinction, that DTE has easements that surround their power lines, that run mostly through our backyards, um, in some cases, along streets in town. And within those easements, they have the right to, to maintain the trees. It's, um, it's their, their legal ability to, to cut those down or remove or trim them as they see fit. Um, there's, there's also trees that are outside of their easements that they will potentially be trying to trim or maintain now. And we just want to make sure that DTE understands that we would like them to have, have as soft a touch as possible at those, and that work on those trees does require homeowner approval. So part of this is we want our residents to know that when DTE comes through, that they, they do have the ability to work with DTE, to come to a reasonable outcome, and that that does require the homeowner's approval to, to do, to approve the work that DTE wants to do. So the proposed resolution goes through and, and has a number of wherashes that state that we agree that reliable electrical service is a important thing, and that maintenance of trees is important and necessary, but that, that it be done in the least impactful way possible. Um, and then it goes through and has a number of stipulations on the resolution, including that they use the least impactful methods, that it err on the side of minimizing the removal of any trees, that they, uh, DTE shall continue to adhere to establish professional tree trimming standards, that DTE shall contact the city of Pleasant Ridge in not less than 15 days before work is planned to begin, and review their proposed trimming and removal schedules with us, to provide the city and each property owner where tree work is proposed with a clear depiction of the boundary of DTE's right-of-way easement, so that the property owner will be informed of which trees are on their property, and which trees are within the easement, because knowledge is power. DTE Energy shall make arrangement for replacement of trees or other vegetation that they must remove from public property, that they have to secure appropriate approvals and/or authorizations by the property owner for work to be done on private property outside of any right-of-way easement, uh, that they will move all limbs, branches, degrees, uh, from private property that they take down and grind, or remove the stumps of any trees, uh, that they have to remove unless the property owner indicates otherwise. In the past, DT has simply trimmed the tree and left the wood there for the homeowner to deal with, and we would like for that to not happen. Uh, and finally, that DTE Energy will not trim or prune oak trees before November 15 or after March 15 to protect oak trees from the threat of oak wilt disease. And those are the, um, those are our requests or stipulations that we would make of DTE and pass along to them. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you may have for me on this.
Better question for Jim. You know, many times resolutions are symbolic or feel-good gestures to say how we feel about something. Is there anything in this that can, one, bring this to the attention of DTE, so they even know about it, and then, two, to help compel them to actually adhere to some of it as best they can?
To a large part, DTE, um, their participation or adherence to this resolution will be determined by them. Um, this isn't anything that will be binding upon them. Like I said, we want to make sure that we raise the visibility of this issue for our residents, so that they may know their rights. We want to raise officially, with the voice of the commission, to communicate to DTE what our desires are. Similar communities have passed resolutions and have gotten some concession from DTE based on that. So, um, it's a nothing ventured, nothing gained kind of, uh, exercise. We will certainly transmit this along to our contacts at DTE, so that they're aware of it, um, follow up on it.
Thank you. I believe DTE has become more sensitized to these issues.
I believe they have, yes.
In just recent... Any other questions, Jim?
Mayor, um, Jim, with, in the city staff, can anyone pretty much answer the questions, the detailed questions that residents might have as things are coming up, or is there one specific person?
I mean, there's three of us in City Hall, and we can, we can all overhear each other's phone conversations, so we're all pretty well up to date on the, what the issues are here, um, and who the contacts are, so, one of the, one of the small-town benefits, I guess, just, we're a one-room City Hall.
Great. Can we send out maybe an e-blast of this information to residents?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Let me get that on the, on the schedule.
Thanks.
All right, um, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Your honor, I move the resolution urging DTE electricity to exercise due care and restraint in trimming and removing trees be adopted as recommended. Is there a second?
A second.
Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerziak?
Yes.
Mayor Matzger?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. The next item is resolution calling on the Michigan Legislature to ban discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Jason, you introduced it, please.
Well, um, thank you, Mayor. Um, this, this was a resolution that I asked to bring before my colleagues on the commission. I feel it is important, considering our unanimous, unanimous support of a civil rights, uh, human rights ordinance at, um, the city level, which was passed unanimously in 2013, um, to send a message to our state legislatures that these protections for, um, should be extended to all residents in the state of Michigan, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. And the legislature has had over 30 years to expand these protections, which I believe are fundamental, and they have yet to do so. So, um, building on our support at the local level for a human rights ordinance, I felt it was proper to communicate to our representatives in Lansing that, as far as the city of Pleasant Ridge is concerned, that these rights are human rights, and there should be no jurisdiction in the state of Michigan where it is proper to discriminate against anyone based on their sexual orientation or gender identity. The Michigan Civil Rights Commission, which was created by the Michigan Constitution to carry out constitutional legal guarantees against discrimination, um, this commission is charged with investigating alleged discrimination against any person because of religion, race, color, national origin, sex, age, marital status, height, weight, arrest record, physical or mental disability, but they are not under the jurisdiction to prevent discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. This organization, this committee has, um, for 30 years, recommended expansion of protections for LGBT residents in the state of Michigan, and have yet to find a satisfactory response from various Michigan legislatures, um, under both Democratic and Republican governors. So, um, as part of their, uh, report on LGBT, LGBT inclusion under Michigan law, um, which is online, and I encourage anyone interested to, um, examine this report, it's very clear, their number-one recommendation for action for inclu, for ensuring that Michigan residents do not suffer any discrimination, regardless of, um, their classification. Their number-one recommendations for action to the Michigan Legislature is that the department recommends that the Michigan Legis, Legislature expand Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act to include sexual orientation and gender identity expression, support, uh, legislation with comparable, comparable policy implementations. Now, this is their standing position on this issue, like I said, for the last 30 years. So I believe the time is right at the state level to extend these protections for our residents, and, um, that's why I request that my colleagues consider this motion this evening.
I wanted to thank Commissioner Kerziak for bringing this forward, and I think it's very important, whether anybody listens or not, that Pleasant Ridge makes the statement.
Yes, thank you, Jason.
And the reality is, Mayor, the reality is that people will listen, because it will be one of these things that's measured in the Equality Index.
There you go.
Corporate Equality, Corporate Equality Index has a measurement, and now we have municipal index indices that track these things on a national level. Pleasant Ridge is a part of that index, and, uh, so it will go notice nationally.
Any, any other comments? Okay, may we have a vote?
Mayor, I move...
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
Excuse me, I was just carried away.
I move the resolution...
That was a done deal.
I move that the resolution calling on the Michigan Legislature to ban discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity be adopted.
No wonder Amy looked at me like... Is there a second?
I second.
Here we have a vote.
Commissioner Kerziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Matzger?
Yes, motion carries. Does keep us in line. Okay, now we're going back to the item that was taken off the consent agenda, and that is establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, September 8th, 2015, at 7:30 PM, to solicit public comments on the request by Whistlestop One, Whistlestop Something Inc., to transfer this Class C liquor license from May's Restaurant, Inc., to Whistlestop One, Inc., to operate the Whistlestop Restaurant at 2406 O. Woodward Avenue, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I requested this be removed just to offer some discussion and perhaps any questions on it. One, I have a question for the city manager. I know that the city facilitated an informal meeting of residents and the new ownership of Whistlestop, just to discuss any issues that residents may have, and what the business can do to help mitigate those issues. Um, we have a lot of the information in our packet, but I know not everyone maybe has had a chance to read the packet, so I wonder if you could just quickly summarize a few of the, the main concerns, and, and where do we stand with them? Have they improved, or are they in the midst of approval, improvement at this time? Yeah, thank you.
Uh, we did have that meeting. We wanted to convene that meeting with the new owners of the business, the new operators of the business, um, and the residents before the public hearing, just so that they would have a chance to work together if there were any issues arising from the operation of the restaurants. We had probably eight residents who attended, along with Commissioners Perry and Kerziak, and, um, generally, the, the tone of the meeting was, was very positive. Residents, um, on the whole seemed appreciative of the efforts that the new ownership of the restaurant had taken to, I guess, address some of the ongoing issues. Uh, they've cleaned up the trash area, they've arranged for a second trash pickup for the garbage cans twice a week now, so that helps with the smell and some of the other issues. Um, they've put a sign out in the grass area on Amherst that points people, public parking available. We, the city, have changed the signs to public parking, um, so I think they're appreciative of those, those efforts. Couple residents were, were still unhappy with how the restaurant is operating and the parking overflow, um, but, you know, on the whole, I think the residents were pleased, and there really were no major issues that came out of that meeting that gave us concern heading into the public hearing. So there's really no follow-up that was necessary out of that meeting, uh, so at this point, we're proceeding to schedule the public hearing for that liquor license transfer.
And if there are other issues, I'm sure we'll hear them at the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve establishing a pub, I'm, establishing a public... Do I have a motion to approve establishing a, establishing a public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move to establish a public hearing. This would be item 8F on our agenda. The public hearing would take place on Tuesday, September 8th, 2015, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the request by Whistlestop 1, Inc., to transfer the Class C liquor license from Mae's Restaurant, Inc. to Whistlestop 1, Inc., to operate the Whistlestop Restaurant at 24060 Woodward Avenue, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Is there a second?
I second.
Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Moxley?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, city manager's report.
Very little for you tonight. Commissioner Perry mentioned in her planning commission liaison report about the upcoming traffic calming test projects that we're planning on Ridge Road. I'll give an update and a little more in-depth presentation on what those are at the September meeting, since I'll be closer to when we implement those. So just wanted to double back on that real quick. Other than that, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Any, any questions for the city manager? Good, okay. Other business.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give an update. We have two founding members of our Little Libraries project with us tonight. Pat Rose and Thomas Crowe. They joined me last month to discuss location of a proposed little library in the city of Pleasant Ridge. And as fate would have it, Commissioner, or excuse me, our city manager, Jim Brockman, indicated to me that he had received contact from the principal at Roosevelt Elementary School who was interested in partnering with the city of Pleasant Ridge about a little library in Hessel Park. So...
It was actually, it was strange. I was in a meeting with her today on a completely unrelated subject. At the end of the meeting, she asked me, hey, what do we have to do to get a little library over there in Hessel Park? And I said, well, contacted. So it's, I mean, we haven't, you haven't even coordinated with her yet, but it's auspicious.
Yes, it was a very welcome piece of coincidence, and it was a finding or agreement that the group who had gathered last month really found that that location would be ideal for the first little lending library in the city. So now that we have a location agreed upon, we are now working on design. There was some conversation at our gathering of maybe having two independent libraries, maybe one at a height for adults and one at a lower height for children with a school theme, maybe a school bus or a schoolhouse theme of some sort. These guys I have come to learn are very good woodworkers and I trust they'll be...
I don't like the looks, wait.
No, I trust them.
Just say, yes, we are.
Yes, they are. So we're finalizing designs for that, but we're still on target for a fall install in Hessel Park for the first little library in Pleasant Ridge. And for anyone else who would like to join us, our next meeting will be Monday, August 31st, at 6:00 PM in Gainesboro Park. We will discuss designs and scheduling. And then after, at 7:00, we will have our monthly book club meeting where we'll be discussing Stand Facing the Stove. This is the story of the women who gave America the joy of cooking. It's the lives of Irma S. Rumbauer and Miriam Rumbauer Becker, and it's by Ann Mendelson. And it comes highly recommended, and we're looking forward to discussing this on the 31st. If you are too, please join us. It's open invitation as always. And again, we'll be gathering at Gainesboro Park on Monday, August 31st, to discuss Stand Facing the Stove. So I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, one item for me, please. You may have noticed, or maybe not, that there are maybe a few extra people around town stopping and looking at your house or maybe taking pictures. Don't be alarmed, this is probably or hopefully just members of the beautification committee starting their work for this year. So the group is composed of seven members from the community. We're looking to narrow it down to four winners as of last, as we did last year, and then one business perhaps for this year, if we might have a business that has made some suitable improvements or noticeable improvements lately. I'm not sure if we have one like that or not, but we'll have to find out. We'll find out at the October meeting, of course, where you can expect a very good presentation, strong presentation like last year with dazzling transition effects. We have some recent presentations that I think have really caused us to look at our own presentations and maybe improve some of the special effects that we put into them. So I don't know what the budget is for lights and sound and smoke and things like that. It'll be a really good presentation. And again, that'll be October. Between now and then, we'll be narrowing down the selections. So please don't shoo us off if you see us around your house. We won't intrude, we won't trespass. We'll just maybe take some pictures for the slideshow, and then we'll debate that amongst ourselves, and then we'll come to you in October. That will be October 13th. So for that, great excitement.
Gee, I wasn't planning on being here in October, but...
I'll come to that. Just kidding, just kidding.
Is there anything, any other comments? Anything else? Any other business? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some votes.
On figure?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay.